I call the September 18th, 2023 Planning Commission meeting to order at 6:00. Madam Clerk, would you please do a roll call?
Commissioner Glenn. Commissioner Allen.
Here.
Commissioner Cohen.
Here.
Commissioner McCabe.
Here.
Commissioner Fernandez.
Here.
Commissioner Scoggan.
Here.
And our new member, Commissioner Shane, is absent today. We have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. Are there any additions or changes to the agenda? Any objection to the agenda as written? Hearing and seeing none, the agenda is approved. Commissioner McCabe, would you lead us in the pledge?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the consent agenda includes the minutes, the regular meeting minutes, from August 21st, 2023. We have an introduction for a public hearing of quasi-judicial matters, Resolution 23-32, a conditional use permit in accordance with Matsu Borough 17.60, conditional uses for the operation of a marijuana cultivation facility known as Green Go, located at 2323 East Palmer Wasilla Highway, tax ID number 17 November 01 Whiskey 11 Alpha 020, within Township 17 North, Range 1 West, Section 11 Seward Meridian. Public hearing is October 2nd, 2023. Applicant is Sandra Milhouse for Green Go LLC. Staff is Rick Benedict of Planner 2. Introduction for public hearing legislative matters, Resolution 23-34, a resolution of the Matanuska Susitna Borough Planning Commission, recommending approval of an ordinance adopting MSB 2.29.110, procedures for appeals, requests for correction or request for exemption under MSB 17.11, sex offenders and amending MSB 17.11.080, appeals to reference the appeal procedure for MSB 2.29.110. Public hearing is October 2nd, 2023. Staff, Alex Strawn, Planning and Land Use Director. Resolution 23-35, a resolution of the Matanuska Susitna Borough Planning Commission recommending approval of an ordinance amending MSB Title 15 relating to the Planning Commission. Public hearing, October 2nd, 2023. Staff, Alex Strawn, Planning and Land Use Director. Are there any objections to approving the consent agenda as written? Hearing and seeing none, the consent agenda is approved. At this time, we'll move to audience participation. Members of the audience may speak regarding any topic that is not on the agenda for public hearing. There'll be three minutes per person for any topic not scheduled for public hearing tonight, and five minutes for community council representatives. Is there anyone on the phone? Okay. Is there anyone in the audience? Okay. Hearing and seeing none, are there any objections to closing public hearing? Audience participation then is closed. Okay. We're moving to public hearing quasi-judicial matters. Resolution 23-24, a conditional use permit in accordance with MSB 17.61, core area to operate a school bus facility, bus barn, within the core area planning boundary. The site is located at 1600 and 1672 South Tanya Court, tax ID number 7964000L002 Within Township 17 North, Range 1 East, Section 16 Seward Meridian, applicant Dowell Engineering, staff Peggy Horton, Planner 2. Peggy, would you like to come?
Good evening, Madam Chair. My name is Peggy Horton, Planner 2 with the Development Services Division. I am pleased to present to the Commission the staff report, which can be found on page 157 for Resolution 23-24.
Excuse me, Peggy.
This hearing was postponed at the July 17th.
Excuse me, Peggy.
I'm sorry.
I missed something that I need to do before we go on.
Go right ahead.
I apologize for that. Because this is quasi-judicial, I will be asking three different questions. If... If one of these pertain to the commissioners, please say yes or no to the questions. Number one, do you or any member of your immediate family have a substantial financial interest in any property affected by this decision? Or will you recognize a foreseeable profit as a result of the decision? All commissioners said no. Or indicated no. Number two, have you received or otherwise engaged in ex parte contact with the applicant, appellate, or other interested parties or members of the public concerning the application either before, during, or after this matter was submitted for decision? All commissioners have indicated no. Are you able to be impartial in this decision? No commissioners indicate yes. I'm sorry, go ahead, please.
The applicant has gotten here. I wonder if I could take just a couple of minutes to update her on the handouts that you have? One moment.
That's fine. The handout she's talking about is on the website and it's in your orange folder.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, I am going to provide you the overview of the staff report for Resolution 23-24, which can be found on page 157 of your packet. The hearing was postponed at the July 17th, 2023 Planning Commission meeting to today. During that postponement, staff concentrated on providing the Planning Commission with more in-depth findings concerning noise, traffic, and hazardous material storage. We think you'll find them helpful with your decision-making process. The public hearing process, or the public noticing process, the borough staff mailed 30 notices on May 18th to property owners within the R.I.P. and Jensen subdivisions and within 600 feet of the subject lot. The frontiersman posted the public hearing notice on the May 17th, 2023 issue. Staff posted the application material and emailed the application material and request for comments to borough agencies, outside agencies, and the Gateway Community Council on May 10th. And staff has yet to receive any comments from the community council. Public comments that came in start on page 895 and continue through page 923. Some of the noise complaints revolve around the horn honking and backup tones from the buses. Staff notes that MSB 17.61.080 exempts sounds from these types of safety devices for complying with noise restrictions. In your handout, you'll see the new PC resolution. We noted today that there's a couple of findings of fact where they had to be corrected, where the level of service as defined by the HCM had to be corrected from C to B. And then in the conclusion of law on page 2968 of your packet was changed to remove what we thought might be a misleading sentence. It was the last sentence in that conclusion of law. So staff does recommend approving the conditional use permit to operate a bus transportation facility at 1600 South Tanya Court. Staff is recommending a permit period of 10 years. Staff considered the 10-year analysis included in the TIA, the school district contract period, and the borough's expected population growth. With the recommended conditions of approval, the operation meets all the applicable standards of MSB 17.61. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff? Okay, at this time, we'd like to open the public hearing on Resolution 23-24. If you're on the phone and would like to speak, please press star 3. Are there any on the phone? Okay. There's anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this? We're getting... okay.
Madam Chair, does the applicant get a chance to do his public hearing, public, no, speaking, I'm sorry, presentation before the public notice?
Yes, I apologize for that.
This is Jason Ortiz, Development Services Manager for the Matsu Borough. You can just postpone, like, not open it yet. So we're not opening our public hearing yet, if you'd like to do that, Madam Chair. And then Laquita correctly is one that's going to be representing and doing a staff report, I believe.
Okay. I apologize for that. It was my error. So at this time, we are going to postpone public hearing. I'm sorry, public testimony. And we will start with the applicants. Go ahead.
Great, thank you. Do you have the presentation?
I do, Jason Ortiz, one moment here.
Perfect.
You just need to tell me when you go to next slide here.
I can do that, thanks. Good evening, my name is Laquita Chimalowski, and I am the Land Use Planning Manager here at Dowell, representing the applicant. I do have representatives in the audience with me this evening with Durham to answer any questions that you may have. Next slide, please. So a little bit about the project location. It is located at 1600 South Tanya Court. There are two properties that make up the site. This is an existing facility just off of Blue Lupine, and there are a mix of commercial, industrial, and residential uses nearby. Previously, it was a natural resource extraction, so it's been an industrial use for many years. Next slide, please. So this map just shows you a little bit about the uses. So the areas in blue are commercial developments that currently exist. And then the red is residential and the gray is industrial. So as I mentioned, this is just a mixed-use area. So the bus facility is, seems, appears to be compatible with the surrounding uses. Next slide, please. So the site was, it was existing. There are two buildings, both located on Lot 9A. There's an office building as well as a shop building. And visitor parking is located on Lot 9A along with employee and bus parking that extends onto Lot 2. The site is accessed from a driveway that extends to Tanya Court. Next slide, please. So because this is a bus transportation facility, the hours of operation are 4:30 a.m. to 7:30 p.m., Monday through Friday, excluding holidays. The thing that's important to note is that because it's related to the school operations, the bus facility is in full operation during the school year and then has limited operations in the summer. There is also site lighting. Right now, there's temporary lighting, but there are LED fixtures that'll be installed by the beginning of November. The lights themselves are here in the state, but we're waiting on the light poles. So that'll help with any, to provide safety for site personnel while not impacting the nearby neighbors. Next slide, please. So a little bit about the site infrastructure. So there's an existing well and septic system. We have an interim approval to operate for the well with the Department of Environmental Conservation, and we are continuing to work with them to get our final approval. And then the septic system has also been approved for the facility. Next slide. So as staff mentioned, one of the things that we looked at was noise. And so this table shows what the code-required noise levels are. So when you have a commercial or industrial use adjacent to residential during the day, it's not supposed to, the noise levels are not supposed to exceed 60 decibels from the actual noise generator. Next slide, please. So as it outlined in your packet, the borough staff went out and did some readings on two different occasions at the site. And what they found was that the ambient noise, so the existing noise out there before this facility was in operation, was at or just above 60 decibels, so above what is required or allowed by code. And then when they did those readings, what they found is with the buses running, it really only increased the decibel level by a marginal amount, so like .1 or .2 decibels. So it was negligible. Next slide, please. Okay. So a little bit about the traffic. So we did a traffic impact analysis. And what we do when we start these is we look at how much traffic's going to be generated by this development. And this information came from Durham prior to their opening the facility. And so what we found was that, and we look at the peak hour. So the, it's the time of day when the traffic is highest on the adjacent streets. What they found from the information that was provided is that there would be, in the peak hour, there would be 237 trips. So every car that comes in and every car that leaves is counted as a trip. Next slide, please. And then we coordinated with the Matsu Borough and the State of Alaska Department of Transportation and Public Facilities to talk about what intersections should be analyzed. So we're not just looking at the driveway or at Tanya Court. We ended up looking at eight intersections around the site that may be impacted by this development. Next slide, please. And then we look at what the operations would look like at those intersections on the opening day and then what it would look like 20 years out. And what we found is that all the intersections were operating at the same or acceptable levels of service. And levels of service is how we grade intersection operations. And it's really speaking to the delay that you have when you're looking to make a turning maneuver or a through movement. And it's graded just like your report card, A through F. The only exception was that the intersection of Parks Highway and the northbound terminal of Trunk Road. So when you're sitting at that terminal today, you get off the highway, you're sitting there and you want to make a left-hand turn, you're going to experience some delay because of the through movement. So there's not, there's not a lot of gaps for people to turn left. So that's happening today, that level of service is just below what is acceptable. And the buses add to it a little bit. It doesn't change the level of service, but it's increasing that through traffic. So there's less delays or less openings for folks to make that left-hand turn. So. Next slide, please. And then we did the same analysis for the traffic, what the traffic would look like in 20 years, including this development. And we had same findings at that same intersection. Next slide, please. So this is just a summary of the TIA mitigation that was identified. And so we did speak with DOT because in both cases, these are their facilities. And so at the higher road at Blue Lupine and the Parks Highway northbound, or sorry, at the Parks Highway northbound terminal, DOT indicated that they wanted to monitor that intersection so they can determine what the proper long-term intersection controls should be. And then we also identified that the crash data, there was, and this is not due to this development, but there was a crash data that showed higher-than-average rates at the intersection of the Parks, or Parks Highway northbound terminal at Higher Road. But there wasn't really, there wasn't a correlation that could be made with that crash data. So again, DOT wants to just monitor that situation to figure out what might be the best controls there. And then we did a turn lane warrant analysis at Tanya Court in Blue Lupine. And what we found there is that a turn lane was warranted on Blue Lupine. And we are coordinating with DOT and the Matsu Borough to widen that portion of the road to provide that left-turn taper as you go into Blue Lupine. And that'll be part of the Tanya Court upgrades that are scheduled for next year by the Matsu Borough. Next slide, please. And so this is a drawing just showing essentially what that taper would look like. So it gives some refuge for the buses to get out of the line of traffic as they're making that right-hand turn. And some of the, and the reason that the taper was determined, decided on was that you have several driveways along this frontage as well as a pathway and limited ride away. So when we look at these things for mitigation, we're taking all of those engineering items into consideration as we determine with the agencies what the appropriate mitigation is. Next slide, please. And then the hazardous material. There is a 10,000-gallon above-ground storage tank at the site for diesel storage and for bus fueling. It is a double-walled steel tank located on skids that provides containment. And it has been approved by the Fire Marshal. Next slide, please. So one of the things that occurred is that the fuel tank currently sits, it straddles the interior property line. So if you were standing out there today, you wouldn't realize there's a property line there. So we are in the process of replating to meet the setback requirements for the fuel tank. The borough has called for the MYLAR, so the recording of that plat is imminent. Next slide, please. So just as conclusion, this is a mixed-use area with commercial, industrial, and residential development. It does appear that the bus transportation facility is compatible with the uses in the area. The noise readings were found to only be a few decibels above the ambient noise. And we are working, we did do a traffic impact analysis and are working on the appropriate mitigation to address any traffic impacts. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? I do have one.
Sure.
I was curious on the two different plots and how the change was in the lot line. Was there ever a consideration, and I'm not sure if you're the right one to ask, but to just make them a single lot?
Yeah, there was consideration to do that, but the, they did not want to combine it into one parcel at this time. So they chose to do that lot line adjustment.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. There's no other questions from the commissioners. We'll at this time open the public hearing on Resolution 2324. Is there anyone on the phone? Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to it? Okay. If you're on the phone and would like to speak to Resolution 23-24, please press star 3.
Yes, hi, audio check, please, for 2324.
We hear you loud and clear, go ahead.
Excellent, and just to confirm, this is for, oh, I misspoke. I'm early, I'm waiting for a later item in the agenda. I'll go back to hold, please.
Okay, thank you.
The gentleman that was just on the line, do you mind unmuting for a moment? Just so I can get your name. I just want to make sure that you are, have the opportunity to speak. Can you raise your hand, the gentleman that just spoke? Can you raise your hand so that we can? There we go.
Yes, I was just waiting for an opportunity to comment on the conditional use permanent consideration for the bus barn facility.
Yeah, this is the, this is your opportunity. I just wanted to make sure. I'll let the chair take it from here.
They said 2324, but that had shown up previous in the agenda as well.
This would be your opportunity, sir. You can go ahead. Please state your name and spell your last name for us as well.
Yes, Austin Burrow adjacent property owner, B-U-R-R-I-L-L.
Okay, go ahead.
And yes, I would, I had the opportunity to provide written comment previously, and I commend the assistance from the staff to facilitate that. Adjacent property owner to the proposed Durham School Services commercial bus activity on the property that's owned by McKenna Brothers has contract relationship with the borough. We strongly oppose the proposed conditional use permit. The open-ended question is, is what was wrong with the previous operating site with the prior two companies? Had the opportunity to review the extensive handouts. There was language in there over the past year-plus of basically optional enforcement of different elements of borough code to allow Durham School Services to operate prior to having a conditional use permit. The question begs is, when does the city manager have the authority, not as elected official, to have optional enforcement of elements of the code as a company commences full operation without a conditional use permit? As recently as today, for example, the floodlighting associated with the unpermitted school bus operating site is pointed directly at the residential homes on South Tanya Court. And the handout materials, they speak at great length about directional lighting and down. So on many elements in the proposed packet, the actual physical conditions on the ground do not match, and we have not seen progress. So I asked the members of this panel... So I asked the members of this panel to provide careful deliberation. We have, basically have 200 million reasons to do things in the wrong order. $200 million contract for 10 years with the Matsui School District. I would offer that there's significant additional consideration beyond the planning drill that has taken place to date. I thank you for your time. And once again, we are strongly opposed to a conditional use permit at this operating site, and I yield the remainder of the time back to the commission. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else on the phone? I'll ask one more time. Is there any questions from the commissioners? Okay. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak? Okay, at this time, we will close audience participation. Okay, Ms. Horton, do you have any other comments that you would like to make at this time?
Oh, Laquita was mentioning the TIA. Normally, it does look at 20 years, but this time it was only 10. It was, is 2022 and 2032. That was something I noted. We can call the bus barn and see if they can't get that temporary lighting to maybe turn away from the residences for now. As Laquita said, the permanent lighting is, is coming. It's in your packet as to what that's going to look like. It's downward-directed, poles in the parking lot, and so that shouldn't be a problem. But until then, we'll see if they can't change their temporary lighting to turn away from the residents, toward the residences. So we'll, we'll do that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, at this time, I will entertain a motion for Resolution 23-24.
Ms. Commissioner Allen, I'll move Resolution 23-24. Commissioner Scoggins will second it.
Commissioner Allen made the motion. It was seconded by Commissioner Scoggins. Open for discussion. Any discussion? Any objections? No objections. Okay, we are moving to Resolution 23-31. A conditional use permit in accordance with MSB 17.60, conditional uses for the operation of a marijuana retail facility known as Telkeetna Connection, located at 39209 South Telkeetna Spur Road, tax ID number 24, November 04, whiskey 29 Delta 002, within Township 24 North, Range 4 West, Section 29, Seward Meridian, applicant Telkeetna Connection, staff Rick Benedict, Planner II. Before we move forward, this is an ex parte. Again, I'll ask the commissioners to just reply yes to any of the answers or any of the questions if you, if these pertain to you. Number one, do you or any member of your immediate family have a substantial financial interest in any of the property affected by this decision? Or will you recognize a foreseeable profit as a result of the decision? All commissioners indicated no. Have you, number two, have you received or otherwise engaged in ex parte contact with the applicant appellate other interested parties or members of the public concerning the application either before, during, or after this matter was submitted for decision? All indicated no. Number three, are you able to be impartial in this decision? All indicated yes. Okay, Mr. Benedict, would you like to proceed?
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is Rick Benedict. I'm a Planner II with the Development Services Division. It's my pleasure to provide the commission with an overview of the proposed conditional use permit. This evening, the staff report for PC Resolution 23-31 can be found starting on page 979 of your packets. Alyssa Tunnel Eastwood, on behalf of Telkeetna Connection, has submitted a conditional use permit for the operation of a marijuana retail facility. The proposed use will occupy a new structure approximately 576 square feet in size and be accessible from South Telkeetna Spur Road. The subject property is 11 acres in size and has been used commercially since the 1970s. The applicant has secured a lease from the property to conduct operations within a one-acre area located on the northern portion of the property. The subject property currently has four existing commercial uses, a real estate office, two eating establishments, and an espresso shop, all located south of the proposed use. MSB 17.03.020 directs public notice for conditional use permits. 24 notices were mailed on July 25, 2023, to property owners within 600 feet of the subject property and to the Susitna Community Council. The frontiersman published the public hearing notice in the July 21, 2023 edition. Staff posted the application material on the Borough's website on July 14, 2023. Staff emailed the public notice application material and a request for comments to the Susitna Community Council, Borough Offices, and outside agencies on July 18, 2023. No response was received from, from the Susitna Community Council or the public. One response was received from the State of Alaska Department of Transportation and Public Facilities indicating the commercial driveway permit had not been finalized and requested the applicant contact the state to complete the driveway permitting process. MSB 17.60.100B2 requires granting the conditional use permit will not be harmful to the public health, safety, convenience, and welfare. The applicant has applied for a commercial driveway permit with the State of Alaska Department of Transportation and Public Facilities, which is currently under review. Staff recommends as a condition of approval, within one year of the issuance of this conditional use permit, the applicant shall provide a copy of the state-issued commercial driveway permit reflecting the operations that obtain legal access to South Telkeetna Spur Road. MSB 17.60.150B1 requires that marijuana-related conditional uses not be located within 1,000 feet of school grounds. The proposed use is located approximately 1,150 feet from Little Sioux Valley Junior and Senior High School. MSB 17.60.150D1 requires that all applicable licenses have been obtained from the State of Alaska Marijuana Control Board. The applicant has provided documentation reflecting that on June 24, 2021, the Marijuana Control Board met and approved the operation for a retail marijuana store license in a delegated status. MSB 17.60.150D2 requires approval from a Fire Marshal having jurisdiction that the proposed conditional use shall be in full compliance with all applicable fire codes. The applicant has provided an approved fire plan issued on August 19, August 19, 2022 from the Alaska Fire Marshal indicating the commercial use, commercial structure is in full compliance with all applicable State of Alaska fire codes. MSB 17.60.170B and C require marijuana retail facilities provide a minimum of one parking space per 350 square feet of net floor area and provide parking spaces that comply with current ADA requirements. The applicant has indicated the use will provide the required parking, required number of parking spaces based on the net floor size and will meet ADA requirements. In light of the application materials, staff site visit, and comments received from outside agencies, Borough staff recommends approval with conditions of the conditional use permit to operate marijuana retail facility located at 39209 South Telkeetna Spur Road. The draft resolution containing these recommendations can be found in the packet starting on page 1,123. That concludes my, my report. The applicant is here in, present this evening.
Okay, thank you. The applicant with the Telkeetna Connection, if you would like to give some further information, this would be your opportunity.
Um, I'm just trying to cover the office.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for the staff? Go ahead.
Do you know how many, this is Commissioner Allen, do you know how many marijuana retail facilities there are in Telkeetna currently?
I'm sorry.
Asking Mr. Benedict, sorry.
I, I do not know the exact number of, of retail facilities.
Okay, are there any other questions?
Yeah, Commissioner Glenn, that, so we're giving them, they got one year to get their driveway up to spec, is that correct, from DOT?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That's correct.
So 12 calendar months from now, and apparently that's safe as it is, correct?
That's our recommendation.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, if there's no other questions, at this time, we'll open up to public hearing on Resolution 23-31. Is there anyone on the phone? Okay. Are there anyone, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to this? All right. Seeing and hearing that there are no other persons to be heard, are there any objections to close in the public hearing? Okay, then public hearing is closed. Okay, Mr. Benedict, do you have anything else that you'd like to say?
Madam.
Okay, thank you. I will now entertain a motion for Resolution 23-31. I'll move 23-31.
Commissioner Fernandez here. I'll second.
Okay, Commissioner McCabe made the motion. It was seconded by Commissioner Fernandez. It is now open for discussion. Any discussion? Okay, are there any objections? There are no legislative matters for public hearings, so we're moving to correspondence and information. Mr. Ortiz, would you like to, would you like to take that one?
Yeah, I got it. Thank you. Jason Ortiz here. So we originally had some training scheduled for the Planning Commission, and it seems that September's a bad time because of hunting. I see a lot of nodding going on. So we're, we're postponing. We're going to change that and, and just change it from like going forward. We won't be scheduling any type of training for Planning Commission in, in the month of September. So we have a couple proposed dates right now, October 16th or the 30th, but I believe we have, we have the potential to have a guest speaker on the 30th. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. The Planning Division has a, a gentleman that is going to be coming up and doing some long-range transportation planning with him, and he has also done some Planning Commission training as well. With that respect, and they have him scheduled to come up, and Jason will take it on.
Yeah, so if we want to, if we wanted to do that training on the 30th, we can piggyback with that gentleman. I believe he's authored some books and done some training for Planning Commissions. So we thought we'd have him come up and combine that training with general motions, communication, findings of facts, conclusions, and like tie all that in one training. So if everyone, if there's no opposition to that, then what we would do is set it for October 30th, starting at 4:00 PM.
Sounds like there's no opposition.
All right.
Through the chair. Just to clarify, I don't see that there's a scheduled Planning Commission hearing. Does that mean that we'd come in for the, the training? And is there a timeframe for when that would conclude?
This is the Clerk Carol Reese, and I don't have any definite timeframe on how long his training will take. I would guess we'd like to keep the work session probably to two hours, so an hour for our regular training that we'd like to do, and then an hour for long-range planning training.
Perfect. And, and there is no Planning Commission hearing on that date?
There is not. It would be a special work session.
Beautiful. Thank you. Appreciate it.
This is Commissioner Allen. So are you thinking like four to six in the afternoon, or is this a middle-of-the-day situation?
That is correct. We're thinking 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM. I mean, we could, we could start it at six if, if you guys want to do that, and six to eight. We just thought we'd try to get you guys in a little earlier and end earlier. So it's up to you guys.
Four works, fine for me. Earlier would have been a problem for me, but.
All right, well, we'll, we'll plan for October 30th from 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM. And like I said, if anyone has any other suggestions, talk to us in advance, but other than that, we'll, we'll get an agenda out to you guys pretty soon.
Thank you. Would you like to continue with the commission business?
Sure, I'll just, you want me to just go into commission business and comments?
Yes, please.
All right. I don't, you guys have the, the current list of upcoming items. Nothing that we really jumps out that I need to bring up to attention of you guys. We've removed a couple things, but, but on the tentative future PC items list, you guys have everything on there. It's pretty straightforward. My comments, I do want to welcome, we have a new Planning Commissioner, Andrew, Andrew Shane. I have not yet got the opportunity to meet him, but he should be joining us at the next Planning Commission meeting. We also have some legis, or ordinance, I don't know if it's ordinance or legislation, I apologize, but it's about adding a couple Planning Commission members that's going to be coming up here soon as well. So that'll be something to, to be on the look, look at. And one of the things we wanted to talk about, or just get you guys' feedback, so for instance, like on today, when you're looking at quasi-judicial matters under the resolutions and you're looking at everything, for our purposes, we were hoping we'd be able to do this, but it's up to whatever you guys would like to do. We were hoping to remove all of the, like, where it says, you know, Township 17, Range 1, East, Section 16, and just only remove it when we have an actual address. So when there's an address and it's clear and it's on the road system, just put in address. For an area that's not such as, like we have some, a Matt Tower that's going to be in the middle of nowhere, having that information would be, you know, we'd want to put on there. But it's totally up to you. The only thing, it just makes it a little simpler to read for the public and simpler for when we're reading here on the record. Up to you guys. Just want to get your feedback, see what you guys wanted. Director Strawn and myself and a few others, we're talking about it today, and so we thought we'd bring it up to you and see what you guys wanted to do.
Go ahead.
Yeah, Commissioner Glenn, to the attorney, what's your read on doing that?
I think it's really meant to provide notice to the public. So, you know, I might have to think about it a little bit, but if there's a way to provide them better notice, which is a typical street address, that might be fine, as long as those don't change. I think my guess is the reason that they have the property description is because those, you know, tend to not change, but.
Through the chair. Just a couple of thoughts for everyone to consider. In my mind, it makes sense to have both the physical address and the legal address, just to almost provide an opportunity for confirmation, like independent confirmation from independent citizens who are reviewing and double-checking to see if they have the right property. One of the reasons that we focus a lot on One of the reasons that we focus a lot on the legal address in the real estate industry is because there can potentially be a change in the physical address of a property in the future. So I don't know for record-keeping purposes, right, if it makes sense to keep everything consistent throughout time in perpetuity, however much we can. But I certainly understand the idea, and I appreciate that it's been brought up as a topic of conversation to potentially just have a physical address. As of right now, I think I'd have to mull it over as well. It's not an immediate response for me, so.
And my, this is Commissioner Cohen. My opinion on that would be it's legal definition, and that's the one that's not changing as well. So, yeah, I would have to think that one through.
Yeah, we can let the attorney.
I know there's sometimes new, you know, these connector, or the, I forget what the little roads are that they put on main highways or technically called, but sometimes the addresses change when those are added. So that was, that's the one thing that's popping into my head.
Well, we can look into it a little bit more. It was an idea that came up for the sake of, from the moment it gets from introduction to public hearing, addresses aren't going to change. So the only thing you would be looking at is like 20 years, 10 years down when you're researching something. But for our purposes here, there would be no effect on anything. But if you guys want to think it over, let us know. We can change it anytime. It was just trying to make it simpler for the public. So when they see something that's just real simple with Google and all the tools that we have nowadays, you can find everything really fast. So it was just a thing to make easier for the public. But whatever you guys want to do in the future, just let us know.
Through the chair. Commissioner Fernandez here. Out of curiosity, this is, so you're just talking about on the agenda that we read, right? But the process, the applications, everything still cites specifically the legal address?
Correct. This is just visually for the front page of this, what it looks like on our.
I think I'm overthinking it.
Yeah, no, no, we would not eliminate it from any of our processes or anywhere. We would still definitely require and use it everywhere throughout documents. It would just be for the reading and for the front page of what we go through on the agenda.
And to be clear, when you send out public notices about a public hearing that is going to be upcoming for a community, the mailing address that we send those to are all physical addresses, correct?
For public, when we're doing public notices, yes, those are just going to be addresses. Yeah, be correct.
Okay, thank you. I'm good.
Anyone else? Okay. Well, then, we'll go on to comments. Mr. Ortiz, would you like to start us?
I don't think I have any other comments. Thank you, guys. Nice to be back today.
Okay. Commissioner Glenn.
I spent the entire day with the UAF drone people, the executive director, and they're moving a drone facility, a pretty substantial investment in Palmer and the airport. And we've been running around getting them lined up with suppliers and such as Tri-Jet, these guys that do machining work around here, and Airframes Alaska, which is in Palmer that makes, you know, aircraft parts and modifications. And they should be probably feet on the ground here in Palmer by about the 1st of November with the first drone. And these are not, these are not little drones. They're 25-foot wingspan. It's a real deal. So they're currently building a hangar in Manana, and that's under construction. You can go on the Alaska Aviation Weather cams and see the building going up. It's on one of the cameras. And it's going to be a pretty good investment that they're going to spend here. So pretty exciting, actually. It's going to be neat. So it's my only comment.
Okay, we'll go in the other direction. Commissioner Allen?
I didn't have any comments, but I want to ask Commissioner Glenn. I mean, that's fantastic news. Thank you for sharing that. And do you know what the purpose of most of those drones are going to be?
It is, they're looking at building a system up for doing, you know, unmanned flight to delivering freight and stuff to western Alaska. That's what the pretext is to all this. And it's, they're working on the airways. They want to be in Palmer for our wind, actually, wind testing. And they're in the right spot for that, which they can't do in Fairbank. So they're going to come here to do that, and they're, they want to be able to work between here and Valdez where they're getting the water and, you know, the moisture and freezing and all that. So that's their preliminary stuff they're working on, so.
That's awesome. Commissioner McCabe?
That is really exciting. We got to see those up at the railroad celebration of the 100-year anniversary. They had a display there with the drones, so that was great. Happy hunting for the last week of open moose season.
Excellent. Commissioner Fernandez?
Nope, no comment. I always enjoy our time in this room together, whether it's short or it's long. I get really caught up in the routine of the day-to-day throughout the week. My life has become unfortunately predictable. So to have something to disrupt that pattern, it really, it almost makes me feel more alive. So thank you, guys, for being here. Thank you for your patience on my walking in with 15 seconds to spare, and.
You made it on time.
I look forward to continue to serve with you all. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Scoggins?
I have no comment.
Okay.
I would just like to say thanks to everybody. Another great meeting. Look forward to continue working with you, and I am looking forward to the training. It'll be very interesting. With that, we will call this meeting adjourned at 6:55.